Welcome to the October Sholo School Board Meeting. John, did you want to make a statement quick? Is he there? Okay, well, President John Larson is out of town, as is Vice President Mr. Wyatt, so I'll be running the meeting today. John is on his phone. Is he on audio?
I...
Hopefully, we'll get that fixed. Before we start, I have a brief statement that I'm going to read.
I'm texting to see if he can...
Okay.
Can our audio people? Because they did have him on the screen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, John, go ahead.
Okay. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our October General Board Meeting. Thank you for being here this evening. Before we begin with anything, I'd like to read a statement that we have. Dear Sholo community, it has been a longstanding tradition that we start each school board meeting with an opening prayer. We recently received a letter from an organization called the Freedom From Religion Foundation petitioning the Sholo School Board to suspend our long-held practice of praying at the start of our school board meetings. For tonight's meeting, we will have a moment of silence in lieu of an invocation. As a school board, we are evaluating all of our options regarding this matter. Thank you. Due to me not being there in person and the logistics of me running a meeting off of Zoom, I have asked Lamista Schultz to run the meeting this evening. So at this point, I would ask for if Kelly Boyer would please offer a... We'll have a moment of silence first for one minute. If, Courtney, if you'd please time that for us. And then, Kelly Boyer, if you would, offer a pledge. And then, at that point, I will turn the meeting over to Lamista for her to go ahead and run that meeting in person. And I'm very excited for Lamista to have this opportunity, so I encourage everybody to be supportive and helpful as she has this opportunity to run a meeting. With that said, we'll have a minute's worth of silence, please.
Please join us for the pledge.
Regent, through the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, we are God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to item 2.1, approval of agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 3.1, approval of minutes.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Motion passes. All right, item 4.1, the approval of financials. We have Karen Smith here this month to talk to us. She's out of town, but luckily, we have Karen here.
Yes. The items before you during this item is to approve the vouchers and to recognize the student activities report that we're required to provide to you on a monthly basis. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. It's, as you know, the pretty standard that we, because we process payroll every two weeks, we process accounts payable on a regular basis, we bring the vouchers back to you for ratification.
Any discussion or questions?
I move to approve financials as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, item 5.1, public comment. I'm going to remind you that you will each have three minutes to speak. The timer will be over there. Before you speak, please identify yourself for the record. And also remember that you may not make comments about any individuals during your time to speak. And also, another reminder that the board is not allowed to discuss or respond to these comments. We may only direct staff to study the matter or ask for further consideration at a future board meeting. So first, we have Mr. Larry LeBlanc.
Good evening. My name is Larry LeBlanc. I am a resident of Sholo, and I will, I pray to Father God, right now that you send the Holy Spirit upon this entire building, Lord, with discernment and clarity. Amen. Thank you. I was hoping to be here tonight to say thank you for responding to several requests made at the last couple of meetings. Instead, I feel disrespected by the inactions of everyone here. Dr. Farnsworth shared with us his 20 years of experience in this very business, yet he knowingly seemed to have violated the Record Request Protocol written in ARS 39-121-01, Section D, Item 1. Mr. Larson, I think he can hear us, is that right? Mr. Larson, I'd like to ask you, did you not instruct Dr. Farnsworth to get this done at the September 12 meeting?
So I'm just going to make a reminder that you cannot speak about certain individuals, nor can we respond to any questions during this time.
On that same date later, I had spoken to high school principal, Mr. Ben Marchand.
Excuse me, please do not speak about individuals, either staff members, students, or other members of the community. You can't talk about specific people during this public comment, please.
On the same date later, I had spoken to a person who was capable of sending me emails listing the materials that would be used in teaching the Constitution Week in the high school. I received nothing. However, somebody did call me to ask for my email stating that Mr. Marchand, excuse me, stating that the materials would be emailed to me. I received nothing. In that case, I'd like to note that the people who should be getting back to me, I duly note their lack of follow-up. Please let us talk about the Title IX Amendment again. A resolution was prevented for review several weeks ago on August 8th. Where is that response? I would like to request that your Title IX Coordinator, please give a public explanation about the Title IX Amendment and why Sholo should adopt anything written in the Title IX Amendment. And can we please add that to the next agenda? As a board, you should be focused on safety, welfare, solid education of our kids, making that your number-one priority. Parents of Sholo, we need your help. The Department of Education is indoctrinating your kids. Surely, most of you see this.
Sir, your time is up.
Do you know that there are no physical books
Sir, your time is up.
...in the Sholo education system, so what is being taught? Excuse me, sir?
Your time is up, and I would like you to step back to the audience now. Your time, your three minutes is up. I'd like you to step back now, please.
Thank you, and God bless America.
Next is Janet LeBlanc.
Good evening. My name is Janet LeBlanc, a resident and taxpayer of the Sholo School District. I would like to thank you for placing the board's goals on the district's website. Allow me to focus on goal two, providing service. SLUSD will achieve its mission and vision by engaging all stakeholders. SLUSD will foster positive relationships within the community by giving back with acts of kindness through service. At the August 8th and September 12th meeting, I asked you to consider adopting the Dizart Schools Resolution Regarding the Title IX Amendment. To date, I have not received an answer. On August 27th, I placed six public records requests. At the September 12th board meeting, I informed you that I had not yet received an answer on not one of these requests. I provided you with the statutes stating that you are required to promptly provide these records. If not, then they are considered denied, and any public records requests that are denied must be provided with a list of those records and an explanation why they are being denied. To date, more than five weeks since my request, I've received neither the records nor the denial. Please tell me how these actions on your part as a governing board of this district fulfills goal two, to engage all stakeholders and foster positive relationships within the community, as well as fulfilling the law. Superintendent, I am disappointed that I have not yet received any follow-up from you from our August 21st meeting regarding ARS 15203A25, in which the State Board of Education is to provide and maintain to every school a handbook in which a moral, civic, and ethical education is to be provided. You promised to check into that and get back to me. Again, I've received nothing. I was hopeful this board and administration really did want to work together with the community and be transparent, as required by law. Speaking of transparency, the recording meetings on YouTube are nearly impossible to find. There is no date order whatsoever, and it would be nice, as part of your goal too, to have this corrected. I have been more than patient with much grace, and your continued non-responses now force my hand to take these violations to the next level. Thank you.
Next, we have Kate Angelos.
Kate Angelos, I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, retired Navy, and I'm here to discuss as briefly as I can get to the point about academic excellence. I have researched Common Core, I have researched Beyond Textbooks, and I have looked to see where Arizona ranks in the nation for public education, and we are sitting at the last spot. We're nowhere close to academic excellence, according to the national stats. The one state, the number-one state in the United States is Massachusetts. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because taxpayers are paying money, our taxes are going up, and nothing looks like it's being improved upon. Common Core was generated as a response to the 2002 No Child Left Behind Act, and Barack Obama started that in 2009. States have adopted it, and the states have not improved the academic excellence because of it. How Massachusetts is doing it, I'm not sure. I could research that further. But to go into a Beyond Textbook program that is basically creating a curriculum based on the teachers and the administrators' experiences, I'm not so certain that that's going to improve Arizona's academic excellence. People have pulled their children out, they're homeschooling, they don't want any part of the school system. And according to Arizona Revised Statute, Chapter 15, Subparagraph 721, the parents and the taxpayers are allowed to inspect Beyond Textbooks, any curriculum that is to be presented to any child in Arizona. And from what I've read from the GilbertWatch.com, they're being exempt from looking at it. That is a violation. And I don't agree with Vail in Tucson saying that it's strictly a teacher's tool or to develop a curriculum. What does the curriculum involve? What content is being taught to these children that the parents are not allowed to look at? And that, to me, raises a red flag, and I'm hoping, standing here, that Sholo Unified School District will give it a deeper investigation and better thought before they adopt it. Thank you.
Next, we have Janelle Sterner.
Good evening, board members. Ms. Janelle Sterner, I'm just coming to you again regarding the public request. Again, as many of the audience has said over and over, it's very hard to get public information that, you know, we would like to, whether we're a parent, whether we're a teacher, whether we are community members. The biggest thing is when you go onto your website, your website says, you know, you guys want to be very welcoming and have a key component is just being able to talk to parents and talking to community members. When you look into the public records, one, it's very hard to get onto the public records, trying to find anything on there. I would suggest that you guys really take a deep dive and maybe just put it on your events or on your very front part of your website. The second part about trying to get a public record is it requests you to log in. Now, it's really interesting going to many different school boards, even municipalities working for on a city of Payson. The other thing is when you're able to go on most of their boards or inside their website, you're able to go ahead and just download a PDF, get a little piece of paper, put what you have, take it to the front, and it seems like there's a lot of miscommunication because no one knows who to go to. So I would ask again that if you could do it online, if you're not able to do it online, it would be easier for somebody came into the district office, was asked, say, can I just go ahead? Can I just get a document? Can I go ahead and be able to fill it out and able to get it? And then also, at the time that it needs. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. But, oh, sorry, one last thing. It breaks my heart, really breaks my heart, that you guys went stand-up for the prayer and all the long time that you guys had, that you guys went stand-up for it. So it makes me sad. Thank you.
All right, moving on to student and staff recognition. We have Linden Elementary here.
This is where Kenna, Kendi Ray, when you come up, guys. Amazing kids, amazing teacher. We have amazing... Okay. Is this the microphone? I haven't done this in a while. Okay, I'm going to start with Kendi Ray. Kendi Ray embodies kindness, respect, and responsibility in everything she does. Her peers describe her as someone who is always smiling, helping others, and showing kindness to everyone around her. She's thoughtful, smart, and goes the extra mile to make sure others feel included. Her third-grade teacher, Mrs. McCrayley, says Kendi's passion for reading and her kind, thoughtful nature created meaningful connections and deeper discussions in class. Her fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Fariter, wanted to share Kendi Ray is one of the best students I have ever had, and that's 25 years. Not only is Kendi Ray gifted intellectually, she's also gifted ethically, and Kendi Ray shares her gifts and helps any and helps any and everyone who needs help. And she does it with kindness and humility. I have never heard Kendi Ray say an unkind word, and I have never heard Kendi brag about her many talents and abilities, and she has all of them. She's mature for her age and daily exhibits excellent classroom behavior. The one thing that Kendi Ray has that can't be taught is her heart, and Kendi has the kindness, most honest, caring heart. Kendi Ray is a special little person. I can't wait to see how far Ms. Ison goes. She has imprinted a permanent place in my old teacher heart. Don't call it old. Her teacher, Mrs. Podol, who's here, says Kendi, I am so proud of everything you've done this year. You're always kind, respectful, caring, responsible, and safe. You are always smiling and happy. Your kindness is greatly appreciated by your teachers and peers. You're a true friend to all. Your respect and responsibility shines through no matter where you are. You always work so hard and never give up. I'm so proud to say that you're in my class this year. Kendi Ray, you're a leader, a great friend, and a valuable member of our Linden community. We are so proud to have you as part of our school family. Thank you. Ready, Kenna? I have a lot of great things here, too. So this is Kenna. Kenneth exemplifies cougar pride. He is kind, respectful, responsible, and always willing to help others. His peers describe him as funny, full of energy, and always there to brighten someone's day. Whether playing football and following school rules or helping a friend who's hurt or simply showing kindness, Kenneth goes above and beyond. Even in the mornings, he always has a smile for me. His third-grade teacher, Ms. McCrayley, who's also here, shares Kenneth's enthusiasm, says Kenneth's enthusiasm and support for his peers create a joyful learning environment for all. His fourth-grade teacher, Mrs. Fariter, wanted to share Kenneth Garvin is a firecracker of a student, blending superstar talent with humility and kindness. When I had him in fourth grade, just when I thought I had seen all his abilities, he surprised us with more. His sheer excitement for learning was incredible. Whether solving math problems, discussing history, or writing essays, Kenneth would eagerly raise his hand, always ready to engage. Despite his talents, he never brags. He simply wants everyone to succeed and be happy, always giving his best with kindness and enthusiasm. His teacher, Mrs. Podol, says Kenneth, I'm so proud of everything you have done this year. You're always kind, respectful, caring, responsible, and safe. You go out of your way to help your peers. You're a strong leader, and your fellow students look up to you. Your role as Student Council President is a perfect fit for you and all that you represent. I'm so proud to say that you're in my class this year. We are incredibly proud to have Kenneth as part of our Linden family. His positivity, your leadership, even today at our assembly, and dedication to make everyone feel included show that he truly is a remarkable student. Thank you, Kenna. I've known Mrs. Miller for as long as I've been with Sholo. Mrs. Miller, I want you to know this. When I asked our staff to nominate a teacher who embodies the qualities of an A-plus school, Mrs. Miller's name came up repeatedly, and I wasn't surprised. She's described by her peers as creative, organized, fun, supported, dedicated, patient, and genuine. It's clear that she goes above and beyond to serve not just her students, but her colleagues and the entire Linden community. From the moment I met Mrs. Miller, I could see her commitment. She's always asking the right questions, ready to volunteer, and thinking 10 steps ahead to help everyone around her. Whether it's sharing materials, offering ideas, or lending a helping hand, she truly exemplifies what it means to be a collaborative, innovative educator. And during the shutdown, you really showed that. Her work with kindergartners is nothing short of incredible. Watching her students select their morning greeting or engage in hands-on activities that bring learning to life is inspiring. Kindergarten truly is a labor of love, and Mrs. Miller makes it look effortless. Linden Elementary is lucky to have such a dedicated, generous, and thoughtful teacher. Mrs. Miller, thank you for everything you do for our school. We are all better because of you. Okay, so I'm told it's picture time.
Picture time. So we're going to come up to this corner right over here.
I have stuff for you guys, okay?
We've got certificates.
But I think they want, I think they want you to take the picture or the certificate. Okay, we're going to come.
Here, we'll have the kids in the middle. Parents, if you guys want to get up closer to take photos, you can.
Congratulations, Dina.
Great, yes, thank you, Dina.
I like you.
You are a scream, we're looking good.
Everyone get a clap in the middle, please.
Can you guys shake our hands up here? Congratulations, we're proud of you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
You're welcome.
My favorite part of the meeting.
I know.
All right, moving on to item 6.2. We have a presentation regarding the Nicholas Homestead Elementary Comprehensive School Improvement Plan by Charlotte Cars Gray.
Sorry, these are my kiddos. All right. We do have a slide deck to go along with this presentation. So I'm here addressing the board to discuss Nicholas Homestead's current status under Comprehensive Targeted Support Improvement under the state. So my goal is to share the support plan and steps that we have in place to improve student achievement outcomes at Nicholas Homestead. So, waiting for the slideshow. How did we get here? So our students, third through eighth, take the AAS every end of the school year, about April, and our schools receive scores based on student achievement. In 2018, our SPED subgroup at Nicholas Homestead... Does this mouse work?
It will, as soon as he runs it.
There it is. All right, thank you. So at Nicholas Homestead in 2018, so if you look at this chart, the Department of Ed runs on a cycle, a three-year cycle. So 2018 was the beginning of a cycle, and they looked at all schools across the state, and they looked at the subgroups. And in 2018, our subgroup of special ed students at Nicholas Homestead did not meet the threshold that the state had established. So they went into what's called TSI, so Targeted Supports and Interventions. What that looked like was a lot of support went into the SPED teachers and students. Unfortunately, at the three-year mark, when they came back and looked at our scores, we missed that cutoff by just ever so much. So we originally were at about 15% proficiency, and we've moved up to 20%, almost 21%, and the cutoff was 22. So now, we've moved into the second cycle, which is called Comprehensive Targeted Supports through the state. Our goal is to improve academic achievement by the end of 2025, so this school year with the results being measured by the AAS. That's the big test that all of our kids take. Now, we don't get results for those tests until the following school year, about this time of year. So regardless of whether or not we... So regardless of whether or not we make that goal at the end of the school year, we will start next school year under the same label of Comprehensive Targeted Supports. However, our current reality is that we have a brand-new principal at Nicholas Homestead who is passionate about student achievement. She is doing some amazing things at that school. We have district staff who are committed to helping Nicholas Homestead to make great achievements. Myself, Mrs. Marsh, and our new superintendent, we are all dedicated to our students. So what does comprehensive mean? It means that we are in another cycle where we're going to have checkpoints throughout this school year with our representative from the State Department. Mrs. Jones has already been working with Ken from the state. She's been working with them since before her contract even started. So that's been a really great connection that she's had there. We're making data-driven decisions with support from a company we are contracting with to bring in some great professional development, WestEd. WestEd is widely known across the country for their quality of professional development. They target what does this school need, and they come in and they provide that. There will be six site visits from WestEd. They'll be here for two days each time. They'll be in classrooms, they'll be working with teachers, providing that development that they need at that time, whatever they see. So they're gonna give us some training and guidance as far as student achievement, not just with our special ed kids. Yes, we're targeting that subgroup, but we are looking at the whole school. We're looking at every single student that's sitting in those seats and every teacher who's delivering instruction. So our focus is going to be on enhancing that tier-one instruction. So tier-one is your first delivery, the first time a kid hears it from their classroom teacher. Tier-two, tier-three, that's really specialized instruction. But we're looking at tier-one. What does it look like when a teacher is delivering that first look at new standard with a student? We're also looking at our collaborative practices. How do we get together and talk about the data? What data are we pulling? What are we going to do with the data that we have? What are the actionable steps we're going to take once we have all that information? And then, again, with Mrs. Marsh's assistance, the SPED support, getting as much support in there for our special ed teachers as we can because we know that those students need the most help. So the expectations from the Department of Ed are these. So they expect us to provide district-level support, which we're doing, for the principals, the coaches, the teachers. We will be regularly monitoring the tier-one instruction and their collaborative practices. That looks like Mrs. Jones in classrooms. It looks like me looking at data with Mrs. Jones. It looks like us looking at data with the teachers. What is happening? What's working? What's not working? What can we change? And then the ADE representative will be coming on-site and doing site visits with Mrs. Jones and her staff. But she's also, like I said, on the phone with him. I've had phone conversations with him. Mrs. Marsh and I were on the phone with him. So that's a constant relationship. So how do we get out of comprehensive status? We really have to raise the proficiency of our students with disabilities. That subgroup needs to meet that threshold. And we need to implement systematic practices to improve instruction for all of our students, not just our special ed students. Our special ed students are getting that instruction in their classroom, and then they're going into the special ed room to get specialized instruction. Our timeline, moving forward, as you can see here, we will have our virtual visit. That will be Mrs. Jones. An in-person visit will happen November to January, right there at the wintertime. We'll have another virtual visit mid-July. And then we will, again, look at those goals at the end of the year. How did we do? What's it look like? I know Mrs. Jones sat down with Ken from ADE, and they looked at their report for the ASAT. And he was the first one to say, you're not going to get out of TSI, you're going to be incomprehensive. So he has that information much sooner than we do, which was kind of nice. So our students with disabilities, we really need those systems of supports for our SPED students. We've gotta get that tier-one connection into all of our classrooms, especially that tier-one instruction with just every single classroom, and then in those resource rooms. Our SPED teachers, aides, and everyone else, they're included with our PLCs, looking at core content with the teachers, and providing them with that professional development from WestEd. That's going to be golden, really. I'm gonna be continuing to support the curriculum and the instruction. Mrs. Marsh will still be focusing on SPED. WestEd's gonna be coming and doing their site visits, focused building on teacher capacity, which is huge. And then monitoring and reporting. WestEd will be monitoring and reporting with their virtual check-ins, their regular communication, and then they will be giving us an end-of-the-year report. What did they see when they first came in? What were their checkpoints along the way? And what does it look like at the end of the year? I will be monitoring iXL data. That's the program that we use to measure growth of our students. And I'm sending bi-weekly reports to everybody who's on the team to track progress. We're working closely with the WestEd people and Mrs. Jones, as well as Ken Roush from ADE. He will be here conducting his site visits and making sure that we're doing all the things that need to be done for our kiddos. Our specific goals are written in our Integrated Action Plan. That is a plan that we write every single year. We submit it to the state. But Ken has really worked with Mrs. Jones to fine-tune that plan so that it really meets the needs of our students. So Nicholas Homestead's goals this year are to increase iXL grade level percentage by 20% and improve their AAS test scores. So we're really looking at growth. We want all of our students to grow, and that's in Math and ELA. And then her SPED focus is really focusing on improving those iXL scores and improving academic growth overall. So that's what I'm monitoring, what I'm looking at, the iXL data. All right, so what's next? We're gonna continue to work with ADE. We're gonna continue to improve our professional development plans with WestEd and continue to look at that data and make changes as they're needed. I will make sure that our team comes back and reports to you on anything that is going on, anything we might run into, and, you know, our progress, because we're gonna make some great progress this year. Any questions?
Just thank you for the presentation and for being so transparent and keeping us updated on the process. That was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 6.3, Principal Reports. We have a report from Linden, from, which one is that? From Whipple, from the junior high and the high school, and from Nicholas. So all of the schools are in here. I found them very interesting. Hope everyone else liked them. And that is open to the public. Anyone can go on Board Docs and look those up. I highly recommend, if you like to kind of know what's going on in all the schools, it's a great way to do that. So thank you for sharing those again, principals. Any comments or questions about those?
I just wanna say thank you as well. I really like being updated and see what's going on. So thank you, principals.
All right, item 6. Go ahead, John.
I just said thank you, everyone.
Item 6.4, the Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. I, too, would wanna thank all the principals that are here tonight. They did a fantastic job during Constitution Week. They had phenomenal student activities planned, and those were communicated across their teachers and students and parents. And I just wanna publicly thank them for doing such a great job. We even had some connections to get a U.S. Senator to give us a video message just for Sholo. So I wanna thank that Senator for doing that for us, because it's important to our community and it's important to us. I also wanna thank the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, our Director of SPED, and the Principal at Nicholas for just really working hard on their TSI status and working with the Arizona Department of Education. They're putting in a lot of sweat equity, as well as the teachers there. And I just wanna publicly thank them for doing such a great job so far, and they're working hard to get out of that situation. First, on my report, I just wanna invite all of the board that on October the 30th, there's gonna be an event in Blue Ridge, and Ms. Schultz is kind of spearheading that, about stuffing the backpacks for...
Right, the Backpack Snacks Program. We volunteered to do the, to bag up all of the snacks for those two weeks. So it'll be October 30th. Bring someone if you can. The more people we have, the better.
You have to make the light work, right?
Yeah, that's right.
You're welcome to reach out to Ms. Schultz to volunteer so she can get a head count.
I'm still waiting to make sure that the 6 o'clock time slot works, but it sounds like it probably will, so hopefully it works for you guys. John, you're welcome to come, too.
Yes, I would really like to do that.
Great. It's a fun time.
Our high school baseball infield has completely been remodeled, and I wanna publicly express our gratitude for some specific people who really were integral in getting that done. Shane, who's a city engineer, and I'm gonna pronounce his name wrong, Hemiseth, is that right? He was critical in getting this project done. Brandon and Dusty Perkins, for their team assisted with the laser leveling, baseball field grade. They provided a lot of the topsoil, no charge to the district. Kenny Santos and Tim's Landscape Creations, they did a great job with sod delivery and assisting in installation. Jacob Letner, LD, Jacob reconstructed the home dugout locker room and also volunteered with the installation of the sod. Mike Marshall, or I'm sorry, Mike Mariscal and Lane Rogers from the City of Sholo, they assisted in the grade preparation and irrigation sprinkler systems installation. Grant from the Sholo School District assisted with the grade preparation and irrigation adjustment. And also Coach Howe and Coach McNeil, as well as about 15 high school players, assisted in the sod installation. So a lot of people who did a lot of work and volunteering, and I wanna thank our community for that. As you can see, I've kind of been a little bit everywhere. One of the highlights that I'd just like to point out, I was so thankful that at Whipple, they invited me to read to the kindergarten classes. And so I thank you for that invitation. I'd love to read at all the elementary schools, and even high school. I'll read to high school kids. So thank you for that. I was able to also help out at the Linden in charge of the dunk tank, and I was so glad it got cold. So I didn't have to go into the dunk tank. We had a plastic cowl. So that was fun to be out there. The LED lighting in the auditorium has been completed, and Ms. Whipple and her staff has been trained. One of the other highlights, it was mentioned earlier, is about our Beyond Textbooks relationships with the Vail Unified School District. They put on a super conference every year. This year, there were 700 professionals from all over the state. We went down to Vail. We took a team, probably about 24 staff and administrators, and we had a wonderful time working with Vail, learning more about the Beyond Textbooks and how that can better implement our instructional focus here at Sholo. So that was a great experience. The auditors just left, and so we're thrilled that they... Karen, who will be talking later, she did a phenomenal job, and all of our business officers in the district office getting documents ready. They were scheduled to be here through the whole week. They had everything they needed and were done in one and a half days. So that just is a testament to Karen's leadership, Shaly's leadership, our whole staff that got the documents, got the paperwork, and it was just really a transparent process. We have fall break next week, so kids don't come to school. Features, too.
Take a break.
And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving into action items. Item 7.1, we have the AFR 2324 presentation by Mrs. Karen Smith.
Okay, good evening, members of the governing board. I'm excited to be here in person, so I know that I'm typically up on that screen, so it's nice to be here in person. I was doing this presentation a year ago at this time with you, also in person. But tonight, I am here to present to you the annual financial report and the school-level annual financial report. I'm going to focus more on the annual financial report because that is the basis of all the financial information that's included in the school-level AFR. So let me jump over and pull up that presentation so I can walk you through some information. While I'm pulling this up, I will point out that the annual financial report and the school level, the actual ADE forms that have that nice two-point font, are attached to the Board Docs and will be published on both the district website and the, excuse me, the Arizona Department of Education website, assuming that the governing board takes action tonight. So once that's approved, they will be uploaded and, again, cross-referenced on both the district website, on the Business Services page, as well as on the Department of Education website. So a little bit about what the annual financial report is. So the AFR, we refer to it as a report, but it's actually many reports. It is statutorily required to be governing board-approved by October 15th and uploaded to the Department of Education no later than October 15th. So we're actually a couple of weeks ahead of time here, which is nice. It's always nice to be early. But what is included in the annual financial report package is the AFR itself, and that is a complete summary of all of the financial transactions of the school district for the entire year. So remember, our fiscal year is July 1st through June 30th. And then we have a 60-day encumbrance period after June 30th in which we are paying for our goods and services that we received by June 30th. So we closed up the books at the end of August. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about what that reconciliation process looked like during the month of September so that we could actually prepare this report. But it's all revenues, all expenses, our ending cash balance across all of our different funding sources. And that includes our MNO fund that I'm gonna speak to you about tonight, our capital fund, all of our grants, as well as special revenue sources that we receive. So I'm gonna summarize all of those for you tonight. As I mentioned, we also have a statutory requirement and a federal requirement to do what's called a school-level AFR. And essentially, what that does is it takes our district-wide information and then breaks it down into each of our schools, as well as allocates all of our district-wide expenditures, such as, you know, superintendency, business office, technology, human resources, all of curriculum support, all of those different areas that are not necessarily coded out to an individual school. It distributes all of those expenses on a per-pupil basis out to the individual schools. So the school-level AFR, you'll see that there is, in the PDF document that I provided to you, there's a district-wide tab and then an individual-school tab. What that is used for is there is a school report card that is published by the Department of Education each year, and that financial information at the school level is what's used to report the financial information at an individual school level. That was also completed. We also have an annual requirement to do a food service AFR. That food service AFR is because we participate in the National School Breakfast and Lunch Program, we have to report all of our financials, again, all of the revenues, and then all of the outflows, all of the expenses that we have. On that report, it also includes our meal counts, it includes our meal prices, it includes a required match that we have. Because we participate in the federal program, we have to match that with certain local dollars, being our maintenance and operation of our capital funds. So you'll see that there's MNO and capital expenses on there. We also have a K3 AFR. As part of our MNO budget, we receive funding for, specific funding for K3 students. It's called a K3 Wait and a K3 Reading Wait. Say that three times fast at 7 o'clock at night. But the K3 AFR, that actually has an earlier due date and does not require governing board approval. It actually had a due date of October 1st. So we uploaded that prior to October 1st, also available on the Department of Education website. And that essentially shows to the state and is reported to the state legislature as to that additional funding that we receive at the K3 level, how those dollars are spent, which here in the district is primarily salaries and benefits. And it's intended because kindergarten through third grade typically has smaller class sizes. So it's intended to really be able to offset some of those costs of additional staffing at the kindergarten through third-grade level. I will tell you, it's a very small portion of that. So to give you an idea, our K3 reading is ballpark anywhere from $80,000 to $90,000. Obviously, we spend a whole lot more on kindergarten through third-grade teachers at that level. So it's really just meant to, you know, supplement a bit of those additional costs that we have. As a school district that is a member of a CTED, a Career and Technical Education District, we also have an annual report in which we must demonstrate that we are not supplanting with those dollars that we receive to be a member district of the CTED. And what that essentially looks at is it goes back to prior to when we joined the CTED and how much were we spending on career and technical education classes. It then attributes inflation cost and enrollment changes over the years, and then looks at what... and then looks at what our current expenditures are to ensure that with the funding we receive from the CTED, that we're still spending at least what we spent prior to joining the CTED on career and technical education. So we file that every year. And then we also have a Classroom Site Fund narrative. It's a Classroom Site Fund AFR. Classroom Site Fund also fondly referred to as Prop 301. Those are the dollars that we receive through state land trust and sales tax revenues, which is primarily used for teacher pay increases. So we have to report out how we spend those dollars on teacher pay and performance pay. And we also report out what our goals were. So every year, the governing board is asked to approve the goals for our performance pay program. So we have a small narrative that's included. It's really more of a chart that identifies what categories were our goals in. So we included that. That's not due to the Department of Education until November 15th, but we have that completed as well for upload to the Department of Ed. So as I mentioned, this is a statutory requirement. It is not something that, at the local level, that we can change the date. It's not even something the Department of Education can change the date. We have to submit this because only the legislature can change the date on that. So as I said, that's why we're bringing it to you tonight, so that we're far ahead of the due date to be able to submit that to the Department of Ed by October 15th. So a little bit about what goes into completing the AFR. I like to say that these couple of pages here, granted the font is super small. It's a labor of love. Because when you think about all of the transactions that we are recording throughout the year, we have to reconcile all that back. We have to verify that all of the information is accurate. So we're confirming all of our revenues. We're pulling down our property tax revenues. We're pulling down our state aid. We're pulling down all of our grant revenues. We're confirming that all of these different entities that provided us funding, that's what we have recorded. In other words, you know, kind of pre-audiating what the auditors are going to look for because we don't want to have any errors in our books. We then look at all of our expenditures to make sure that they are coded correctly. We're making sure that, for example, teacher salaries are coded to the right account code, that supplies, capital items, all of those different expenses are coded in the correct, in the correct account code strings. And again, you know, one box on that AFR accounts for potentially thousands of account codes behind that. So there's a lot of different transactions. For, for one teacher's salary, there are the salary code. Then you have the six different benefit codes between health insurance, retirement, long-term disability, social security, Medicare, workers' comp, you know, all of those different expenses. And then you have it at every school level. So we have all of those different account codes that we have to reconcile back. So we make sure that, you know, this list here, that all of those different items are accounted for and are tied back to our general ledger. We then verify also that we have not exceeded any of our budget limits. We look at all of our grants and we look at what the Department of Education, not just has allocated to us, but what we have approved at that line item budget. We verify that we haven't overspent any of those. We verify we haven't overspent any of our other budget-controlled funds like MNO, capital. We make sure that none of our cash-controlled funds are not overspent. So a cash-controlled fund is like tax credit, gifts and donations, that we don't necessarily have a statutory budget limit, but if we don't get donations, we can't spend. And I know this board, I really appreciate that you take special attention to recognizing all of those donations every year. So, or excuse me, every board meeting. So we have to make sure that we didn't spend more than what we received. So that's an example of a cash-controlled fund. We file our completion reports for all of our grants with the Department of Education. I'm going to speak a little bit to that specifically about some of our COVID-related funds in a few moments. But those reports are due to the Department of Education 60 days after the close of the fiscal year for all of our June 30th closeout grants and 60 days after September 30th for all of our federal grants. So we've actually already submitted many of our federal completion reports related to our COVID dollars. We didn't want to wait until December. So we've already completed that. In fact, Department of Education has already approved our completion report for our COVID funds, which is good. So we're ahead of the game on that. We confirm all of us, as I mentioned, our state aid payments that come through the, the state general fund, as well as all of our property tax collections, that they are, again, are, are recorded in the right fiscal year, recorded against the right account codes. And then we also have certain maintenance of effort tests that we are kind of pre-testing ourselves before the state and the feds test us to make sure that we continue to maintain that level of effort that we have to do when we receive federal dollars. And that has to do both with our special education program, as well as on the maintenance and operation side for our Title I program. We go through all of that in that short window from the time we close out the year to the time that we present this report to the governing board for approval. So a little bit about how the, the district spent its dollars in 2024. So the total expenditures for the year were $41.5 million. You can see that at the bottom of the page. And what I've done here is I've broken it down into some of those major categories of expenditures. So our maintenance and operation budget, we spent just over $17 million. Maintenance and operation, as the name entails, it's operations. So that is primarily salaries and benefits. So salaries, benefits, utilities, and then a little bit of supplies for the most part. But generally speaking, that's the, the lion's share of how our maintenance and operation fund is spent. We have our Classroom Site Fund. I mentioned that earlier as our Prop 301 dollars. It was renamed to Classroom Site Fund because technically Prop 301 sunset back in 2020. It was a community, a citizen initiative that was approved back in 2000 for a 20-year provision. And it sunset when that voter initiative expired, but our state legislature extended it. So because the proposition part fell off, because it was no longer a citizen-approved initiative, it's now referred to formally as the Classroom Site Fund. So I know we all still talk about it as Prop 301 in our, our educationisms, but that's essentially what it is. So that one point, almost $8 million, was really just on salaries and benefits and really just on salaries and benefits for our classroom teachers. It is a very restrictive fund. We cannot spend that administration, on administration. We cannot supplant with those dollars. So we have to demonstrate that we are using that within the statutory allowable provisions. We have our Capital Outlay Fund. Capital outlay is the, the amount in our legislative appropriated per pupil amount that we receive for capital. And I point that out because that's different than the next line that I'm going to speak to. So we receive a per pupil amount for capital. You may also be familiar with the capital lawsuit that's going on in the state right now. It tends to lean because of this capital outlay budget that we receive. We receive roughly about $600 per pupil for our capital funding on a per, on a per-year basis. And just to remind everybody what capital is, it's the, the buildings that we educate the kids in. It's the roofs that are over their heads. It is all of the electrical wiring. It is every Chromebook, laptop, every device that's in front of students. It's the school buses that we drive. It's the vehicles that our maintenance department drives. It's all of our building improvements. It's all of our land improvements. So that $600, you know, doesn't go very far, as you can imagine. So we spend, you know, it very wisely. Typically, capital expenses are one-time expenses, but they become one-time every couple of years. A Chromebook is not going to last for the entire 13 years that we're educating a student. Typically, those are going to last a couple of years. Same with textbooks, library books, instructional aids. Those are all capital expenditures. So what that leads to then is the next line, which is our School Facility Board, School Facility Division. Depending upon the year, they tend to change their name every couple of years. But those are our building renewal grants. That is also state-appropriated, but it's a grant program. We have to demonstrate that our need is more than the next district over. But I will tell you that that dollar amount of $11 million of capital improvements, we don't have another funding source for those capital improvements. So we rely on the School Facility Board for those grants. That is a pass-through. We cannot decide to redirect that money to salaries, redirect that money to textbooks, redirect that money for school buses. We have very limited reasons that we can apply for those grants. We have to pretty much demonstrate a failure of a system, a roofing system, a fire alarm system in order to be eligible for those grants.
You have to wait for the air conditioning to break instead of replacing a really old air conditioning system.
And we also can't use the capital money to maintain that air conditioning unit because that's an operating cost.
Only forward-thinking legislator.
Yes, so, exactly. So thank you for your, don't make me get on my soapbox. You can help me with that. So, so that, that building renewal grant is essentially a pass-through. So, and we have to follow procurement. We have to go out to bid for those projects. We, we use cooperative contracts for those. So it's not just, you know, we just, you know, pick a vendor. We have, all of that has to adhere to our state procurement code. Next line item, I'd like, next item that I have here is our federal and state grants. So we spent just shy of eight, excuse me, $7 million on our federal and state grants. That is our Title I, our IDEA funds, our, our CTE federal grant, our CTE state grant. Those are all of those different grants. The lion's share of that is COVID-related monies. So you've probably heard about ESAR over the last several years. I will tell you that over half of that expenditure was ESAR money. So that will not be on the books for FY '25 because all of those funds have expired. We have spent every COVID dollar we received. None of that is being returned back to the state to be returned back to the federal government. So Sholo spent all of our, our COVID-related dollars. And as I said, we filed our completion report. It's been approved by the state. Now they're just sending us our final payments. So all of those dollars have been spent. That, that number that you see for federal and state grants will significantly drop in 2025 and forward because we won't have those COVID-related dollars. And then the last line item is special revenue funds. That's essentially everything else. So the school district operates about 45 to 50 different funds. And what I described to you for the, the first lion's share of our expenses, what would that be, roughly $38 million? That is, you know, our MNO fund, our grants, our, our Classroom Site Fund, our capital funds. Then we have tax credit auxiliary gifts and donations, CTE, the, the NAVIT dollars that we receive. We have a pass-through for our employee health insurance that when the district pays, pays the health insurance and the employee pays for their family coverage, that goes into a special revenue fund. So that's essentially what that $3 million accounts for, is all of those monies that, again, have a restriction of some sort. But depending upon the fund, it's going to have a different statutory restriction of how we can spend those dollars. So that's in a nutshell as far as what we spent in 2024. The next couple of slides are just visuals for you. So what this next slide kind of breaks down for you is the category of expense in regards to what we refer to as the function. So was it for instruction? Was it for facility improvements? Things such as that. And the reason why I present this to you, because you'll see two, I should have changed my colors up to two different colors of blue, but you'll see two, two large shares of that, that pie that are blue. And one is instruction and one is facility improvements. If we did not have those SFB dollars, that instructional pie would be much larger. But because we have those SFB dollars to the tune of $11 million, it shifts the, the total of, if you went back one slide to see the, the total amount that we spent, you would see that $11 million would come off and our portion of instruction would be much higher. So it's because we get those SFB dollars, that's why it shows 28% of our total expenses are for facility improvements. And then you can see all the other categories. You can see that, you know, we have debt. We have bonds that we're paying off that our voters approved over a decade ago that we're still paying that off because it's a 20-year bond that we're paying off. You'll see, you know, a fraction of a percentage for bookstore operations, food service, transportation. You can kind of go around the line. Administration, 1% of that total expenditure was on administration. And I'll point out, administration is not just the administrators. It is your payroll specialist. It's your accounts payable. It's your technology, human resources. It's all of those areas that are more like central office. It's principal's office. So, you know, when you start to look at all of the different functions in that 1% there, student support, instructional support, all of those areas that are in the classroom but not in that direct teacher-to-student connection. So that could be your related service providers and special ed, curriculum support, professional development for our teachers. All of those different areas fall in those different functional areas. The next piece I have is then what are we buying? So what are we buying? Are we buying salaries? Are we buying benefits? Are we buying purchase services? So again, the two largest pieces of the pie here, you'll see are, actually, I would say probably three. The, the blue, the orange, and the yellow. Salaries and benefits account for, if you add up those two percentages, we've got 46% there. And purchased property services is almost 30%. Again, that is construction. So in our chart of accounts, construction is considered a purchased property service. So again, if we didn't have that $11 million, you would see much greater percentage. I would anticipate that you would see more of like 75% to 80% of the district budget spent on people, which doesn't surprise you in an education environment. But again, because we have $11 million coming to us for facility improvements, it kind of shifts that pie around a bit. A little bit about kind of what's going to be carried into FY '25. So what's being carried into FY '25? The two major funds that we have budget balance carry forward is our MNO fund and our unrestricted capital. So we have a roughly $6 million budget balance carry forward that is coming over to the MNO fund that we rebudget for in FY '25. And we have about $2 million, in other words, in capital. In other words, if we don't spend our MNO budget, we, we keep it. It's not a reversion. It's not something that we have to send back to the state. But I'll point out a couple of things to talk a little bit about the, the budget balance carry forward. So the ESAR funds, we knew that those funds were going to be expiring. So we intentionally built up some budget balance carry forward to help us kind of wean off of the roughly, you know, if you look at all of the ESAR dollars we received over the last several years, over $10 million. So we knew that it was going to kind of be that cliff that we needed to wean ourselves off of. So we built up our budget balance carry forward to weather that storm of not having those ESAR dollars. We also know that our, our budget balance carry forward is higher than, than what we projected on our, our proposed and adopted budget. And again, that was intentional. So we, we always want to underestimate our budget balance carry forward so we can increase our budget capacity in FY '25. And we want to keep some budget capacity in our budget balance carry forward because there are some unknown shoes that could drop. We could not have the aggregate expenditure limitation passed within a given year, that we wouldn't want to make those, you know, very serious. This year, if it hadn't been passed by the state legislature, we would be looking at a 15.5% budget cut in April. Not now, but in April. And when you look at a 15.5% budget cut over the year in the last quarter of the year, it's really more like a 70% budget cut in that last quarter of the year. So it's very important that we keep a reserve for things like that, for unintentional items that we don't know are going to hit us. We don't know necessarily what minimum wage is going to be from year to year. We just found out what January's minimum wage is going to be two weeks ago, and we adopted our budget back in July. So we need to have reserves in place for things that, that will come our way. We might need a major bus repair, a major AC repair. Those are operating costs that we need to have in our, our MNO budget for those reserves. My little XXs there at the end of the PowerPoint, that's on me. I was trying to wind up my bullet points and I forgot to remove those two. I looked at it yesterday and I told myself today. But I was a little distracted.
You ruined a great presentation, Karen.
So ignore those two little XXs. So what's next? So we'll ask you this evening to approve the annual financial report. I'd like to say package. The actual item is asking you to approve the two statutory requirements that the board has to approve, the AFR and the school-level AFR. Once you approve that, I will upload that to the Department of Education. I will work with our IT department to also publish that to our district website. As I mentioned, we have to upload it to the Department of Ed by October 15th. We have to post it to our district website by November 15th. So we're a couple of weeks ahead of the curve on the, the state deadline there. With that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I would just like to thank you for helping us these last couple of years.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you've been a great asset to our district and we're so fortunate to have had you on board, keeping us in line, getting us on track and helping us to have this balance carry forward. And yeah, that's an exciting, those are exciting numbers to see.
So if, you've been around long enough, you remember when it was a negative, $5 million. So to see it swing that way, it was a lot of hard work across the entire district.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
And thank you for, you know, tutoring and helping our staff and bringing everybody in line and advising on why we needed to do what we needed to do. So without you, I don't know that we'd be here. So thank you.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments? John?
No, I just wanted to echo Kim's comments and express appreciation for everything that she's done.
Thank you. I appreciate that, John.
And with that, I will move to approve the District 2324 AFR and SLR as presented.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much, Karen.
Thank you.
All right, item seven point two, classified personnel employment, Dr. Farnsworth.
So we have a few, uh, recommendations for you. Savannah Johns, she's going to be our new financial secretary at Nicholas. And, uh, so we're excited for her to get started. Uh, Shaylee has been going over there doing double duty as Chris's financial secretary for weeks. And so I just want to give Shaylee a, a thank you for doing that. Um, we have some substitutes, Carol Tollis, uh, Krista Sloan. Um, and if you notice there, she's do- a substitute for Medicaid billing. So we've hired a replacement for her. She's just going to help us out from time to time to coach and tutor our new, uh, Medicaid billing specialist. Uh, Richard Matheson, uh, and then at the very bottom of extra duty, uh, Monique who, Matheson, who's in our district office, she's bilingual and does a lot of translating for us and we really, really appreciate what she does across the district.
You know Savannah is a graduate of Sholo School District.
She is.
Anyway.
Welcome back.
I, I love having graduates coming up work for the district and I will move to approve as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point three, certified personnel resignations, terminations, and retirements, Dr. Farnsworth.
So we've had some movement at the junior high. Um, so Gary Reisner, we're asking him to move into a different spot. Um, and Robin, I cannot pronounce your last name, Robin. Well, I can, I, I would mess it up. Kay Queptua, thank you. So we recommend those and then resignations, uh, Braden Woolley, um, who's done a fantastic job at the junior high, but needs to, they're submitting their resignation at this time, so. And we ask that you waive those liquidated damages due to life circumstances.
We will miss him. He's been a great asset to our district for decades. Um, I motion to approve as presented.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
Please extend our thanks to Mr. Woolley.
Absolutely.
Item seven point four, certified personnel employment, Dr. Farnsworth.
So we've been very fortunate that e- even though we've had a science teacher at the junior high kind of mid, leave mid-year, uh, we've been blessed with Robert McKenzie. He and his wife moved into the area and he is already a, a junior high science teacher from where he was coming from. So very excited for the junior high to, to have Robert. Um, I want to make a special note for the next two, Leisha Flake and Brandon Clark. It's a, it's a mistake on my part. We, we say that they're special education teachers. They're not actually certified special ed yet. So they are certified, we, we have the ability to certify them. Um, and they have a teaching certificate that we're able to appropriate for both of them, but they'll be working in special ed classrooms. Um, so I just want to point that out, that they're not special ed teachers.
But they're not certified in sped.
They're not certified in sped, but they have a teaching certificate. And they are going to be in, enrolling in special ed programs to get those.
Working towards that certification.
That's correct. And we've done that before. We've done that before because it's been very challenging to find fully certified special education teachers. They're, they're just like a pink flamingo in Florida. They're not here. They're in Florida and it's, it's hard to get them here. Also some extra duty stipends, you, you can see there, um, Cynthia Whipple, drama director, Becky Eagle, assistant drama director, Nick Pulsifer, pit director, Annika Cotterman, um, for, I think for the assistant music director.
Those are for Feast of Carols?
I would imagine that's for the Feast of Carols coming up.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point five, administrative personnel employment, Dr. Farnsworth.
You can see in the narrative there that, that I'm asking that we give a car allowance for Shaylee for all the different things that she is doing across the district. Our director of operations has a school vehicle, wh- which he should to go around at all times of the day to, to take care of school business. But I'm asking that Ms. Davis get a, a car stipend for all the things that she does or, you know.
Would this be a yearly?
It would be an annual.
And when we approve it now, is that just for this year or is that for going forward?
It's for just this year. So we do it on a yearly basis.
I move to approve as presented.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point six, general stipend addition, Dr. Farnsworth.
I am asking the board that we add a new stipend titled the District Emergency Safety Coordinator. In my short time in the district, I just feel that, that student safety and staff safety is super critical. And we really don't have a lead person to really take the point in terms of coordinating all the safety features that we need to be doing drills, coordination with first responders, making sure our admin is up to speed on the incident command system. There's a lot of moving pieces and parts and, um, to this point, a lot of people have been doing it piecemeal. Um, I'm asking that we add this to the general stipend list. And then my desire is to then go out and look for specific characteristics. You know, police background, school resource officer background, uh, experience in incident command. Um, those are the skillsets that we would need, which is not uncommon in, in districts. So we can focus on making sure our schools and campuses are the safest possible.
So you're looking for this to be, um, a staff member or?
I hope that we can find a staff member on staff. That would be ideally because it's going to be a seamless transition if they're already an employee. Um, so that's my first goal is to see, hey, do we have a staff member that we can already harness their skillsets? Because we do have a lot of people that come from different backgrounds, from emergency management. And so we may have someone that could fit that role. And so that's my goal.
But if you can't, we could get an outside person if we had to?
We could. If, if there's nobody, if there's nobody within the district, there may be somebody outside that we could harness. Um, but it would be better if they're a district employee.
For sure.
And then they could run our safety meetings every month, they could do our campus visits every month. And they're already an employee. So that's, that's what I'm looking for.
I'll motion to approve the new position of a District Emergency Safety Coordinator.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point seven, athletics personnel unemployment, Dr. Farnsworth.
You, you see a lengthy spreadsheet of all of our proposed winter, um, coaches? If it's okay, I'm not going to read all of them.
I move to approve athletic personnel employment and volunteers as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point eight, off-duty contract work and IEP writing services, Dr. Farnsworth.
We do have a lot of, um, IEPs that need to be written. And there's a certain way to write an IEP to make sure it's meeting all the federal guidelines. So there's quite a few, quite a few case, caseloads that we need to address. And so this just gives us the opportunity. If we have a teacher in district that is caught up on their caseload and they want to do it on the weekends to catch up on casework for others, it allows us the opportunity to pay them to make sure that we're in compliance. Because there is a, a deadline and timelines when you're writing IEPs that we need to keep up with. And it can be overwhelming.
Are we still employing, um, a consulting group to help out with this or?
We do. We do have a consulting group that's going to be providing like OTPT consulting services, but also, um, I think at the last board meeting, we approved them to also mentor our new special ed teachers. I think we've got five new sped teachers that need the mentoring, the coaching. And so they should be fulfilling that part. And I don't know if, Beth, is there anything, did I miss on that?
No, that's more the, the training and the mentoring of our, of our brand new teachers. And then this is going to be to help support a specific region behind where I had the certified sped teacher. And we have like a caseload of eighty that we need to help support that.
So is this something new or is this, um, something that, is it something different? I thought, because I thought we employed a couple of people who did this on, you know, outside services. So, okay. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point nine, child nutrition warehouse manager job description, Dr. Farnsworth.
So in, in our audit of our HR and job descriptions practices, we're coming across jobs that we currently have. So this is not a new job, but we don't have a job description for this person. And so there's going to be times that we're going to be coming to periodically and saying, hey, we already have a position, we need to have a job description. And this is one of those cases. So it's not a new position, it's not a new salary. It's, person's already here doing the work, but we need to have a job description that outlines what they're doing.
I'll move to approve the child nutrition warehouse manager job description as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item seven point ten, at the SFD capital plan for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So I don't see the attachment on my board docs. It disappeared because we did have it here. Do you guys have it?
I have it, yes.
Okay, it's off of mine. But you can see we are required to bring to you annually the, um, capital plan. And it's been submitted to the school facilities division and we require board approval. And I'm bringing this to your, to your attention for board approval.
And this shows open enrollment that we have in the district and our ADM projections.
Okay.
If someone's looking at it on board docs, that's part of it too.
And is it for twenty-three, twenty-four or?
Correct.
Okay.
I move to approve the capital plan as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point eleven, Navajo County Special Services Consortium Agreement, Dr. Farnsmith and Mrs. Marsh.
So the main change here is you already approved this contract last year, I think in April. Um, but we need more days. So we, you approved it for, you know, I think a hundred and sixty-nine days. And we need to add an additional forty-seven days to this contract to satisfy all of our services. So that's why we're bringing it back, just to have the board approve that we need forty-seven more days for these contracted services.
I move to approve this special services twenty-four, twenty-five agreement as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Seven point twelve, staff out-of-state travel, Dr. Farnsworth.
Our athletic director is requesting permission to go to the National Athletic Director Conference in Austin, December thirteenth through the seventeenth.
I'll move to approve out-of-state travel for Mr. Hoffmann.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven point thirteen, school properties disposal. Thank you.
I don't see Mr. L, but as it's required that we produce, um, anytime that we dispose of school property, that it's brought to your attention for approval.
I move to approve school property disposal as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Sorry, I was going to say, have we actually sold anything? We're more than, more than the minimum. It looks a lot better.
You can see everything that's published and, or I should say posted and things do sell.
Yeah.
Other than, you know, just discarding it. So we are, we do have a statutory requirement that we have to attempt to sell before we dispose of it.
All right, did I already do all in favor? Motion passes. Item seven point fourteen, there's a new student club.
We, we have two. So we've had these, I think the fishing club has been there before. But again, going back to Karen's leadership and training, we're now putting in, you have to have a constitution, you have to have a supervisor, you have to have, uh, officers, they have to be elected, they have to have all this stuff so they can raise money and do different things. And so we're bringing to your approval the fishing club, uh, for approval and the law and safety club.
I love it. I motion to approve as presented.
All in favor?
Comment?
What was that, John?
I just wanted to make a comment that I am available to chaperone any fishing trips out there.
I'm sure they'll call you.
So I'm, I, I vote aye on this.
Okay. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Item seven point fifteen, gifts and donations.
We have some wonderful donations from Donors Choose for over a thousand dollars. Some of the Darren, Darren Reed Foundation for school supplies. Ronald Hope, Hopi for six guitars, uh, those are at the junior high. Uh, William Crawford, he had donated a bunch of cooking supplies and cookbooks. Highline Vending, you know, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars at the high school. And Bob Ne- is it Neves, um, music and art supplies at the high school.
With a big thank you, I motion to approve as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item seven six point sixteen, student fundraising activity.
So as you know, we're required to bring all fundraising to the board for approval. And so that we have a student activity, uh, through HOSA that they want to run a video game, um, tournament. And so they've outlined their expectations to Mr. Marchant. He's reviewed everything, he's given them strict guidelines. And we talked about this, about what appropriate video games are going to be played and what are not appropriate video games to be played, uh, preyed, played. And so he and I are on the same page that, that we have s- high expectations to have fun, but appropriate fun.
Thank you for that.
I move to approve as presented.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, item seven point seventeen, future board items. Um, I was going to request, I think we're going to be having a, um, study session next month in November.
I, I would also like to add, and I've talked with Shaylee because we've been debating about November, December. We do want to have a work session in December as well.
Sure.
To do a revised budget. I think we're thinking of that time. And I think we're going to have more budgetary type conversations going into the spring. So I know definitely December, we want to have a work session. We can have one back-to-back November and December if that's the board's desire. It's just.
Yeah, I think so. I'd like to request that we speak about the, uh, the prayer issue at our next study session and also include legal counsel for, during that conversation to make sure we can all be on the same page about how we want to move forward. Anyone else have anything for future board agenda items? John, you have anything?
No, I don't. I just want to, uh, join you in asking that we, uh, visit that topic about offering a prayer at the beginning of our meetings.
And in, and preparing for that, I would like legal counsel to be involved in that. But I would also like to know, like statistically, you know, what, um, districts are doing nationwide. Is this a problem that is nationwide or is it specific to our district? And, um, in the letter, there was discussion on how one, uh, district in our state was penalized monetarily. And I would like to know if that is actually inaccurate. Thank you.
Do, what time do you want the work session? Do you want to do a five o'clock, five-thirty?
Like five?
Five o'clock is what we normally do, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I share also with you, uh, about this topic? Um, I reached out to other government entities in our area and, uh, all of them offer prayers before their meetings. Um, so what I, the reason I say that is because I'm very interested to see if we as a school, uh, district, uh, which is a government entity, if we are required to follow different rules than say a, um, county supervisors or the city or any of the other, uh, local government agencies.
So nothing else to add? All right.
If I do have anything, I'll let them know.
Um, item eight point one, as our next governing board meeting will be November fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, thanks everyone. Thank you, thanks, everyone.